...of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Citizen Concerns. I need approval of the agenda for today.
Move approval of the agenda dated June 16, 2015.
Need a second? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Approval of minutes, June 9, 2015.
Move approval of the minutes dated June 9, 2015.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Discussion and approval of claims. I'm ashamed to say I did not look at them because I can't figure out my password.
Move approval of the claims.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I'd abstain from those. Human Resources, authorize chairman to sign the authorization to initiate hiring process? Do I have that, Karen? Okay. Need a motion?
Authorize chairman to sign authorization to initiate the hiring process?
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Mr. Gilliland.
We had a, we had a proposal to participate with the City of Sioux City in their blood drive. They do blood drives fairly frequently. They give, they give compensatory time off to people who participate in the blood drive once they get to a gallon mile mark, which I believe you contribute a pint at a time. Just help me if I'm, where I'm missing some stuff. If my math isn't good. But, so about every eight times that they would give blood, then they would be given a small amount of time off. They're allowed to do the blood drive on city time, participate. And the, the blood drive's currently set up over in City Hall. We wouldn't need to set up anything here. We would just join them there. So the resolution is essentially to authorize people to be able to take off time and I guess to consider the possibility of, of awarding similar to what the city does. But at this time, mostly just to participate with the allowance of time off on county time.
Entertained a motion?
I would move to allow county employees to participate in blood drives on work time and to grant them four hours of, of time off per gallon milestone.
Need a second?
Need a second.
Discussion?
And just to make sure we're, we're clear on this, there would be no retroactive applicability, correct?
That's correct.
I couldn't claim.
From today going forward, yes, sir.
Okay, great. I know Gleiser was back there counting, so I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't the case, so.
Let's see, the five gallon guy now? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, approve of resolution thanking commending William. Help me.
Cheersma.
For services to Woodbury County.
I would move the resolution.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Addition of cybersecurity coverage for liability coverage, discussion in action.
Again, it, as I reviewed this, I just see this as an area of great potential exposure. Your upper liability does have some limits, but so much of the coverage that's, that's there is not covered under a typical liability type of policy. You don't have coverage for cyber privacy breach. The regulatory fines and penalties aren't covered. The cost of defense of those isn't covered. The computer forensics isn't covered currently. They're just a, kind of a laundry list, if you will, of pieces that aren't covered that would be covered here. Multimedia liability. There's some business income and digital asset restoration that would be covered. There's privacy liability, privacy regulations, claims that would not be covered currently. Security breach response wouldn't be covered. So it just seems to me that it's, when you look at what's happened to the Department of Defense with their employees, when you look at what happened to Target, to Home Depot, to Wells Fargo, and on and on and on the list goes, there's, I see this as being a greater threat as time goes by, not a lessening threat. I wouldn't want to argue that insurance is ever a great price, but if you have one claim, you'll pay for a couple of decades worth of premiums.
Okay, we had this for information last week.
Yes. And there's two different levels of coverage that you could choose from. One is approximately $7,400 in premium, the other one's about $11,000, a little over in premium. The, the lower price is a million dollars per, per line of coverage or a million dollars in aggregate for, for an incident. The other one is about $3 million per incident or $3 million, or $3 million in coverage, I'm sorry, or $3 million in aggregate for an incident. To me, it seems like the $3 million probably makes sense, but that's certainly the board's call.
Just for information, we did take this item to the WCICC, and I believe you had a conversation with John Malloy.
Yes.
And our discussion centered around making sure that we had procedures in place as an organization that would not prevent insurance to kick in, you know, if we weren't doing something. There was a disclaimer perhaps in the insurance that it wouldn't cover a breach, but I guess you two had a, a good conversation, and he just said insurance wasn't his, wasn't his deal, and he felt comfortable with your recommendation on this.
I, you know, I would hope it's something we never use, but
Right.
As I said, when you look at the likelihood, when you look at all of the companies and even our federal government being so strongly affected by some of this, I, I don't know what kind of liability they'll incur. Interesting stories on this morning's news about it.
Sure makes HIPAA a strange event in the national scene.
Yes. Yeah, it makes it, and sadly with all of the hacking and things that are going on, it makes the possibility of a, of a real HIPAA breach being there. And this would cover you in the event of that. It would cover the notifications. And the attorneys that I've talked to tell me that the computer forensics, where they go back in and figure how, you know, what data was actually exposed and was made available, that computer forensics, the cost for that is more expensive than the cost of defending the lawsuits. So, you know, and if you think about the costs that you pay for defending the lawsuits, if the computer forensics on top of that is gonna, is gonna put a multiplier on that cost, there's a lot of potential risk there.
Just remind me, I'm sorry if I've asked the same question twice, but the funding mechanism for this is out of the?
The risk and liability.
Risk and liability, okay.
Need a motion?
Just, man, you may be getting a, a phone call from the city manager too, because the city council members were quite interested in, in this insurance, learning more about it and wondering if the City of Sioux City should also carry it. So just to kind of give you a heads up, you may be getting a phone call.
It's always good. It just makes me do more homework, which is a good thing. It makes me wiser.
Take a motion?
And move it?
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, now we have the presentation of a resolution thanking and commending Mr. Ronald Kerr for his service of Woodbury County. And as soon as we get that out of there, we'll have Mr. Kerr come right up to the podium. Mr. Taylor will read the...
Well, sir, I want to thank you, and the board would like to thank you for your years of dedicated service. And so I'll read this. It says, "Whereas Ronald Kerr has demonstrated himself to be an outstanding citizen of Woodbury County by volunteering countless hours in a service since 1993, and whereas your service to the Woodbury County Commission of Veteran Affairs has been characterized by your dedication to the best interests of Woodbury County veterans and their dependents. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa, that the underside members of the board thank and commend Ronald Kerr for your years of service to Woodbury County. And be it further resolved that is the wish of all those signing below, that the future hold only the best for you, this very deserving person. And be it so resolved this day of June, 2015."
Did I hear you're moving to Florida?
No.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Turn around. Somebody got a cam, camera? All right, here we go.
Thank you.
Gotta start over here.
Congratulations.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
Arizona, you'll melt out there.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have been extremely impressed with the Veterans Affairs Commission. They are hard workers. They are consistently on top of things. Keep Danielle on the straight and narrow. Say Arizona. There you go. Thank you, Ron. Veterans Affairs, Danielle Dempster.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I brought Leon Kaster and Ronald Kerr to the meeting as we're gonna make a recommendation for new commission members. They made the recommendation, so if you have any questions, I guess we'll ask Leon. Vicki DeWitt was not able to be here today because she had an appointment, but she sent her regards and her recommendation in writing, which I gave you guys.
And the recommendation is?
Recommendation was for William Burkhardt and Catherine Moreno to serve a three-year term, and for either James Ferris or Lincoln Ryan to serve a two-year term as set forth in the code for setting up new or expanding board.
How many do you need? Three?
We need three new ones, five total.
Okay. So you're leaving us?
Well, I spoke to Mr. Taylor a bit about it. I felt like the commission chose a Vietnam veteran as well as the most recent of conflict veteran, and I feel like it would be up to the board in which direction you would prefer us to move. So Mr. Ryan would be a veteran of, he's had two deployments, he's still a reservist, and he served in Afghanistan. And Mr. Ferris is a Vietnam veteran.
Yikes.
Well, I would move to appoint both William Burkhardt and Catherine Moreno to a three-year term, and appoint Lincoln Ryan to a two-year term.
All right. Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Does that work for you guys? All right. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. You now have five members.
Thank you.
Okay. Approve of resolution thanking commending years of service for Michael Arnt. Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This one I can't believe. Approval of resolution thanking and commending years of service for Dewey Sloan. I figured he'd be here forever.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Then comes emergency services. Gary Brown.
Good afternoon. In last year's capital improvement, in this current year budget that we're in, we had $70,000 budgeted to replace one of our vehicles. We were able to bring that project in at about $58,175.70. We're asking board's approval to allow us to spend $11,700 of that, that we came in under budget to replace a very old Dixon ZTR mower that we have at Climbing Hill that we mow the grounds with. We mow about nine acres. The unit that we want to replace it with is very similar to the one Building Services got. It's just a little wider frame, a little bigger engine, at the price of $11,700. List price on that piece of equipment is $18,590, and we're getting government pricing on it. And then the dealer has two mowers a year that he gets special discounts on, and he gives them out to two different government agencies every year. So we get a little additional discount on that piece of equipment besides.
How similar is it to the Building Services one? Do you just mean it's newer, or?
It's just wider with a little bigger engine. We don't have to worry about getting through gates like Mike does with theirs, so we can go with a little wider deck and cut down on the mowing time. And it's a little bigger engine because of the wider deck.
Where is the one that Building Services has right now? Is that over at Prairie Hills normally, Mike, or?
Well, it's at Prairie Hills, a little more, not in town, so it's out there where they mow, climb hills. Or not climb hills, but Prairie Hills.
Right, yeah. Well, you, well, you said Climbing Hill, so that leads right into my next question, which is, could the mower at Prairie Hills be utilized by trailer to mow Climbing Hill?
Could. We burn up a lot of fuel and a lot of man-hours moving it around. It's about a 30-minute trip each direction, and we'd have to try to schedule it in between when he needs it to mow lots. And my guys mow in-between calls now, when it's not raining and in-between calls, so they, they may be out on calls a whole day. Or if we got the mower out there, it may set the whole day where they didn't mow. So, I mean, we do all of our own building maintenance and grounds maintenance at Climbing Hill with the existing staff, so it could be yes. Would it be convenient? Probably not.
I would move it.
Need a second?
Second.
There's some pushback on this. So you know.
Okay.
Come July and August, we're all gonna be looking at brown lawns, probably. And they have that much money tied up in lawnmowers? That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, the, the mower we've got, we've, we've used for 20 years. I mean, I think we've gotten our good out of that piece of equipment. This piece of, you know, this, it's not unreasonable to expect this mower to last 20 to 25 years, but the, what we're gonna be using it for. It's not climbing hills, it's not banging off of trees, it's pretty much flat land. So I think it's a good investment for the long haul. The mower we're using right now is a two-cylinder air-cooled. It's got over 5,000 hours on it. Every time the guys are out mowing, I expect them to come in and say it finally gave up. It's got 5,000 hours on a two-cylinder air-cooled engine that's never been apart, so, and to rebuild that mower would be, 20-year-old mower would be kind of a waste of an investment, I think.
Is there a trade-in value on that?
Not really. I mean, we could try to sell it on eBay or at City Auction or something, it's...
They won't take it in for trade? Oh, oh, Mike wants it.
Yeah, it would probably work well for you for these small lots. I wouldn't guarantee it to run on...
How many acres is Prairie Hills? What do you got?
We're mowing nine. We're doing it in about nine hours with the mower that we got.
Anyone else?
I guess my only, my only thoughts, and I understand the convenience of it, would be much easier, obviously, having it right there. My only thinking is if I had two pieces of property, one, you know, 18 miles from the other, I don't know that I necessarily have a mower at each one. If we could coordinate a little bit, I would think on scheduling that it would be feasible. Would it be as convenient? Granted, maybe not as much. But if there were some, I'm sure if you gave him what you have right now, that Mike would be more than amenable in hauling and helping, that, that's where I, I stand on the issue, so.
Is this one older than the Building Services one?
No, it'd be a new machine.
No, the existing one. You said 20 years of service.
Yeah, I don't know how old Mike's...
What did you have before that?
We had nothing.
He wasn't mowing the lots.
Yeah, that just got handled. And then the one that, the one that Prairie Hills had, they actually had probably eight or nine push mowers, all inmates, who'd mow climbing hills, and then they kind of asked people to take that over, because they, they just, each one a day, and has time to do it all. And they go out there and mow for a few days. The reason it takes longer out there is it's so rough. The ground is so rough out there that you can't go wide open. So that, that's why it would be, it takes so much time out there.
I mean, with the cost of these, or fuel, and we'd have to have Building Services move it for us, because we would be out there going to get the mower and get an EMS call or rescue call, and we'd be leaving the trailer and the mower sitting alongside the road somewhere. I mean, and it takes my guys out of position if they're running to Prairie Hill, because we try to stay in the center of the county absolutely as much as we can. So our response time is good in all directions.
Could you haul it back and forth, Mike?
I can hear you, Jeremy.
I, I was asking Mike if, if they could haul it back and forth so that that didn't compromise.
Well...
Were you, you're, you're using this to mow city lots as well?
City lots as well, as Prairie Hills. As everything, if, could it be done? I'd have to agree with Gary, maybe, but it might, it might cost what, you know, you know, I'll probably get a lot of letters from the city for any more, and I get that on stuff not getting cold. That's your biggest hassle. I mean, I do one where we're in a hurry, we had to move it right out, maybe keep it outside, if it can't work, then get it.
I mean, we're mowing most of the time right now, in this kind of weather, two and three days a week, for six to nine hours, it, I mean, it takes us to get the yard done, so.
Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
You got a lawnmower.
Thanks, sir.
You gotta think about sheep. Why are you mowing nine acres?
That's what the lot is. We've thought about, we've thought about taking that old ball diamond and using it, just let it grow up into broomgrass, but we use that for training, and that's where we land the helicopter. It's our landing, landing zone for the helicopter, and, so we have to, we have to mow pretty damn regular, otherwise what happens to us is we get a bunch of clumps of grass out there, and when the helicopter comes in, he sucks them all up off the...
Yeah.
Kind of irritates the pilot. I mean, it doesn't, not the end of the world, but it gets in his air intakes, and, but we land the helicopter at Climbing Hill on a regular basis, and it's also a safe haven for the air ambulances in the area. If they get in the area and they're breaking down, or they get caught in fog, that's their, sort of their rescue location to, to get to. So we even plow that ball diamond in the winter and keep it snow-free for the helicopters to come in and out.
Okay, requesting approval to accept the bid for window project that came last week, and that bid is for $41,000?
I have $45,000 in capital improvements. There was three projects we were gonna do. We want to combine them all into one and, and take care of these windows, because we think that's our most, highest priority to reduce the energy loss in the building. I can't give you a number of what it's gonna save. I don't, I, I would be telling a story if I tried, but I could tell you that we have thermal imaging equipment that we use on firefighting, and we've gone out there at night in the winter time and, and use that equipment to look for where the heat's coming out of the building, and it's, it's all those single-pane windows and those glass block windows, it's just bleeding energy. And we don't heat the second and third floor. We use second floor for storage, we use third floor. Every fire department in the county uses that for training. We have a, what we call the rat trap, a maze up there, and then we have a couple of rooms that are set up to simulate living areas, like a living room, bathroom, bedroom, and we fill that with artificial smoke, and then that's where we train the firefighters to do search and rescue. We actually have life-size and, and life-weighted mannequins that they go up there and they find and they rescue them, and we're able to change it all up, so if they go through once, the next time they go through, it looks differently. But we don't heat that area, but the heat, you can't keep the heat from going up. You just...
I thought the bid was for $41,000, and then there was something like $7,000 for sheet rocking or something like that?
No, the, Mike, you want to explain that?
The $7,000 was a bid that HCI forgot to put in. They didn't, or HCI put it in, they deducted $7,000. And Sands Construction went up there at about the same price. If, but we chose to, if we chose this price, we'll go in and help them finish the inside at our, at our, you know, and save the county that extra money.
Who, so who got, who's the, who is this 47?
Sands.
Out of?
He's out of Sioux City.
And what we, what we're talking about on the inside of the building, what we're gonna have them do is frame the, take the old windows out, frame it with two-by-sixes, insulate it six inches insulation, put smaller windows in some areas, lock in the others completely. And then on the inside, all you'll see is the two-by-sixes and the sheet rock, or the insulation, and Mike's crew and Mike's crew over time will go in and sheet rock that inside. We'll use prisoners from the Sheriff's Department to move the sheet rock upstairs and help us. I mean, we can get labor, labor's not a big deal, and we got people, we both have people that have the expertise to do the sheet rocking, and we don't have to texture and tape the upstairs, just the lower level that we use.
What are you paying on propane, did you say, for a year, Gary?
We're using about $16,000 in propane here for the whole complex. And that includes the garage, the four-car garage, but it doesn't use much propane at all.
So you got 45 left over from your projects?
We got 45 budgeted in capital, short to 27, 424.
You got that in your budget?
Uh, not in issues.
Dennis, would that, would the extra difference come out of other CIP projects that come in under, or how does that work?
Yes, I could. We do have extra money in there, so too, the extra money could be covered through our excess, I don't want to say excess, projects come under what they thought they were gonna come out, we do have money covered. So if all these hour goes our way. Mike, I have one question. The Baker group is doing a study on all these buildings. Have they looked at this building? Is this the right move to go?
They did, they did look at this building once we found out that this was up for bid, and I wanted to make sure that we were looking at apples to apples, and I appreciate Gary working with them, and then getting a little more finite granularity on, on this price, which we, we now have, that it's truly apples to apples. And they, they said that it makes sense as long as we're going to keep the building long-term. They haven't run numbers on the, the efficiencies, especially since you're using propane, but I would say just the 24-24 cost alone, that, that difference over and above the $45,000 will save in one heating season, so I think it makes sense to, to go forward with this project.
And the Baker group, the other department head, was very informational. That was, that was a couple hours well-spent on my part. I learned a lot, and, and I got some thoughts on energy efficiency ideas going forward that I think, for not only our building, but for us as a system. I mean, it showed me a simple trick with a smartphone, telling whether your fluorescent tubes are energy efficient or not, so.
I'd take a motion?
I would move approval of the bid of $47,424.68 from Sands Construction to install and replace all the windows at the Climbing Hill facility.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Building Services.
Well, I'm gonna throw one thing away I was up here to talk about, and that was permission for a different mower for the tractor out there. So you won't need that one.
You just got that mower?
No, 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 no. We're talking, we're talking, no, that's a good mower. No, we're talking, we gotta know more after you, that you pull behind the, the old, there's no international after that, the Sheriff's Department actually let us take. We're gonna use that to help mow out to the bigger areas. But it's like a 1920's mower, and it's kind of, kind of a dangerous thing. We wanted to try to find something that we could use out there to help mow, to cut time down. Well, with this extra mower that he's gonna put up, that'll help us out, so I won't need even go for that.
In another discussion today, I think the county attorney is of the opinion that you can't use the prisoners without paying them. So that kind of puts...
...for boss to that?
Well, maybe. That's something that needs to come down from third floor.
No, I'm sure.
If that's the case, then...
Well, in my time, in my time here, I've, I've never, I've never asked to use them, except for now, they, they might do some of the trimming out of Prairie Hills, just around the building, so when we come out to mow, it makes us go quicker. But otherwise, I, I haven't used, I know Mark has used them in the past to actually come up and help remove snow and...
Well, I think it's great, they love to do it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yep, yep.
But I'd hate to get a bill down the road. But I'd hate to get a bill down the road.
Well, there's, there's always a liability.
So we're taking off the bush hog.
Is, is there a new ruling?
Yeah.
Well, Mark, is that a question that's been posed to our office recently, or...
I believe that the sheriff told me that, said he got it from PJ.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't involved with that research, but I, it wouldn't surprise me.
Yeah, so I don't know. Maybe you wanna check on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll touch base with PJ and if there's something that he's provided to Sheriff Drew, then we can provide it to the board as well.
Yeah. Okay, requesting approval to accept bid for asphalt project Prairie Hills.
Yes, we, we would like to go to Barclay Asphalt. Uh, we'd like to do the whole job done, uh, both A and the B. It'd be a total savings from the lowest bid to the top bid of a ten thousand, dollar, forty-six dollar and ninety-five cent difference from the lowest to the top. Uh, from the, from the lowest to the next was a four thousand, seven and sixty-one dollar difference, with a grand total of sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty-four. Now, I do have, I do only have twelve thousand in, now this is July's budget, uh, for Prairie Hills for this project. So I'm looking to pull a little bit of money that I've saved by getting bids under, underneath.
There seems to be a pattern here.
Yes, there is. Uh, yeah, it's, it's only better if we get this done now. Uh, they park in the mud out there in this one section that we'd like to get covered. Uh, we go out there, we fix it. It rains, they, they get a group of people out there and tears it back up. We have to go back out.
So how much do you have in your budget? Net, is this...
Twelve, twelve thousand was our short, four thousand, uh, one hundred and forty-four dollars.
Again, fortunately, we do have some money left over from previous under or overestimation we came in under. We still got some money that we're gonna be under in the fire alarm system. It still does not jeopardize the elevator or anything else. We're gonna talk about the jail doors. We still have the money there. We have money left over. We come tomorrow this time, we're gonna reduce our next borrowing. So we'll use up what we got for these emergency type deals.
That is a mess out there.
It is.
Seems like you say that with every...
Had to be a real mess yesterday.
Oh, well, yeah. There's, see, there's another section out there that probably needs to be either blacktop in the future or at least some gravel added to it. Uh, that's over by the shooting range where everybody pulls out and parks. And it, it just gets a slimy mess. And of course, they drag all the mud back onto the blacktop and it, and it's everywhere. So eventually, we gotta look forward to doing a little something there, too.
Anyone else? Need a motion to include CIP funds from other projects?
I'd move approval of the bid of sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars from Barley, Barclay Asphalt for the asphalt project at Prairie Hills.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Board Administration, Dennis Butler.
Okay, the first, first item we have is the Matlore bill that we were reviewing last week. There were some questions on some of the meeting things. Mark, the chairperson, I did talk to, um, Terry Lutz. We had a teleconference call last Wednesday and we went through it. And the meetings that Matthew and Jeremy attended, he agreed they should've been back on the original fifty-four thousand contract one. Contract two was reduced by twelve, well, was reduced from twelve thousand, seven oh five down to eleven thousand, five oh five, which is still over the seventy-seven hundred. There are several things that through their side and our side didn't know, but he did render the services. So recommend we go ahead and pay it. We are tracking it all now, month by month, so this will not happen again.
Everybody's tracking it.
Oh, yes. They, I'm working with Alex down there with me, keeping Mark and the rest of board informed here. Uh, we do get monthly bills now. There won't be nine months at a time come as somewhat a little bit of surprise. So we take this from the local office and sales tax. The eight hundred dollars will complete the first contract. The eleven thousand, five oh five will complete the second phase of the original I-29 corridor reinvestment program. We move now on to the second con, or the on-call. On the on-call, we will have another bill come through next week that will be itemized. You'll have in your board package. You can review it if there's any questions on it. But that will fall under the original on-call before the cap was put on. Cause the cap was put on June second or third. These were bills for May, so it's fair that should go back on the on-call part before we put the cap. But that bill will come through next week. We have designated lost funds, but we can do that next week. So today, we're gonna have, asking to get this one approved, get it paid, get it behind us and move on because we're gonna have other bills come up. Cause they'll be itemized by the month. And they can run the bill through today. I asked Gene if they could run it through, or tomorrow. Too late today.
I do have a question. Did you ask him specifically about the Nature Center rollout or the Master Plan rollout? Why that did not fall under the, uh, original?
I think on that one, we had more than just Woodbury County. This was additional meeting with other entities involved.
On the Master Plan?
Yes. Then he had several meetings with different entities also.
And the board approved those?
Yes.
Okay, I'd take a motion on eleven a.
So this is a expenditure that's gonna be approved outside the claims.
Correct.
But you're gonna pay it.
Correct.
So you're approving this claim at this time?
Correct.
And it's, the total is twelve thousand, three hundred and five?
I believe that's the right number, Pat. Yes, twelve thousand, three hundred and five.
All right, Gene. Okay.
I'd move it. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion.
On the back of this sheet, it shows twelve, seven oh five.
Okay, that's before they made an adjustment. The back sheet was the original one.
Aye.
You have to go to the front one. The front sheet is the new one showing eleven oh, five oh five with a twelve hundred dollar credit. The back sheet was the old one.
All right, so we're approving two separate billings here.
Eleven, five oh five and eight hundred.
Right. It'll be on the same check, but it's for contract one to finish that and contract two to finish that one. Then we're done with the I-29 corridor, uh, reinvestment program contract. Now we fall into the on-call one.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, discussion in action on proceeding with the TIF financing for Port Neal Circle Road and CF Industries Entrance Road Rise Grant Match.
Okay, this is the road that we're gonna redo. It goes from the Port Neal Road, goes in, makes a curve around, goes AGP, AGP Plant. That'll be your new road. That's with the Rise Grant that just got approved last Tuesday. The other one is for the Rise Grant that was approved a while back, part of the four point one million. And our share is eight hundred thousand for the main entrance road going into CF. Fortunately, both these were included in our last amendment number two plan where we actually specified which roads were gonna be done. Otherwise, we would have to have an amendment to our plan because we didn't identify them then. We did identify them. I checked with our attorney. He agreed with that. And our attorney for these cases are Bob Jostin. He said we are correct there. So all we have to now is get authority to move forward with this process of having the public hearings to borrow the money.
Move it. Need a second? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And you're coming back with...
Yes, low item to spend.
...information.
Yes.
County Auditor, Pat Gill.
This is just to address, uh, an issue that Supervisor Ung brought to my attention when we passed the original, uh, action to, uh, set the board times for the four-thirty meeting. You had, uh, no set times to appear before five o'clock and to end the meeting at five-thirty. Uh, that hasn't worked out. So I'm asking if you folks want to rescind that portion of it, uh, so that, uh, the set times can appear as needed and, uh, that the meetings that'll last as long as they're needed to.
Okay, need a motion?
I moved to rescind the action the board took on January fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen in regard to set times on the agenda and allow them to appear as needed.
Second.
Discussion.
And that, that includes the end time at five-thirty as well?
Correct.
No, crafted that way.
That way we can have a set time anytime we want during the meeting.
Right.
Good.
Um, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Planning and zoning.
Good evening. Uh, single item this evening. Um, Mr. Mel Williams approached and filed an application for a three-lot subdivision on the south side of Hundred and Tenth Street, also known as D-12. A couple pieces of information to be updated from your packet information. First paragraph, first line, uh, there's a reference to a twelve point oh five acre parcel. The parent parcel, in fact, is only nine point oh five acres. Uh, three acres was, uh, previously carved out of this parcel and not yet reflected in the assessor's records. Um, also in the first line of the second paragraph, there's a reference to the location of the parent parcel being three tenths of a mile east of Sioux City. That's incorrect. It should be one point six miles. Neither one of those pieces of information have any significant effect upon any decision that'll be made by the zoning commissioner, by your board. Um, Mr. Williams simply lives on, uh, proposed lot three, uh, wants to carve out, uh, a couple other lots for residential development. Um, we'd like to do that as soon as possible. Uh, I'm asking your, uh, board to refer this to the zoning commission for their meeting next Monday, the twenty-second, uh, for their referral back to you on final plat approval.
Need a motion?
Will be referred.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll look at any final plats you're not gonna eat.
John, that's Monday at six?
Monday at six P.M. I sent you an email.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Yep.
Jackie Smith?
Well, I submitted this agenda item after, uh, the last few meetings that I thought were contentious. So I, um, it's, I guess, maybe a first attempt at, uh, trying to move this board forward in a more collaborative fashion. Um, also, my intent is to ensure fair, equal access of information. So each elected supervisor can make an informed decision. I believe, um, my idea was to develop a policy and procedures as well as a commitment to put, I guess, our differences behind us. Um, hurt, personal gain, whatever it is, I, I would hope that we could, I guess, have a new beginning. After I submitted it, I did, uh, see Auditor Gill put out, um, an email to us on looking at the bylaws. And I think the intent was the same, was to go forward in a more collaborative fashion. So that may be an appropriate way to go as well. I would like to see if we can stop the negative discourse. Um, you know, part of this really could be a function of, um, not having any department heads assigned to me personally, very few committees. So therefore, the flow of information to me, I think, is stifled as a supervisor. And I find it difficult to do my job. I also feel when I, um, talk to department heads that, um, they're put in the middle sometimes of, of our political differences and, and differences of opinion. And I don't think that's fair to them and the best way to conduct our business. So I did have a nice conversation with Supervisor Taylor over the weekend. And, um, I said I don't have any policy or procedures written out, you know, and perhaps, um, depending on the discussion and the thoughts of everyone on the board, I just wasn't presumptuous enough to, to write it all up. But I think if we could go down that route, maybe by some people, um, supervisors, maybe department heads, maybe county attorney weighing in on this, because there'll certainly be some questions that come up, um, on maybe what is, what information can be kept confidential? If it becomes an email, do, do we have to share it? So there are gonna be some open meeting questions, perhaps, if we share things via email. I understand that. But at the very minimum, I guess, what I'd like to see going forward is either consensus that we're gonna, you know, work together on this, um, perhaps a, a motion on actually putting a committee together to deal with, um, something that would be real sequential. I think some of you are probably more sequential than I am. So I would think a, a group effort, um, would serve us, uh, along that, uh, route. But, um, my feedback from our citizens is they kinda want us to shape up. So if we could do that, um, this, I think, might be a way to do it. And, uh, better serve our, our, our citizens. So I guess I, I said that at, now, and I, I would just open up any other thoughts, concerns, um...
I would say, um, I do think it is, it would be helpful for this board to, and I think it would be easy for this board to reach a consensus that if something, if information requested from a department head rises to the level of a report that we have seen in the past, that it should be distributed to all the supervisors. However, I think, uh, both the creation of a committee and a policy would have unintended consequences of putting department heads even more in the middle as we, as they struggle to figure out what rises to that level. So I think it's pretty self-evident what rises to the level of a report requested by a supervisor. But if, if, just for the sake of argument, if Supervisor Taylor or I have, have questions as new supervisors about how things work, we don't want department heads to feel encumbered to, to distribute our, our simple questions and answers to the entire board. Um, and I would just add that, um, a lot of this discussion is centered around economic development, which I think is a, was, I think is a separate issue. Um, but as far as communication, I agree that, that it would be helpful to have, to have the component of, of reports come to the full board. Uh, but again, I think digging into this issue more than it needs to be would have negative consequences. And I would just add that the feedback from quote-unquote "my constituents" would be different than Supervisor Smith. And I think that this board is moving in, in some very good directions overall.
I would say I agree, i- in part with both of you, in the sense that I, I do think it is important. What typically happens, let's say, let's pick on Dennis, because I think we all asked Dennis quite a few questions as our budget analyst. And so I may ask him for a report and then include that in the agenda materials. And that always doesn't give maybe as much time as if that had been distributed directly from Dennis to everyone, not just me. So I, I think that's a, a point well taken. If I'm asking for, for Gene or, or Pat to run something as, that reaches a level of, of a report, that's more than just a simple question. Um, I, I do think that that makes sense to distribute to all supervisors. Um, I think it, it should be incumbent upon everyone. So I, I don't have any real heartburn with that. I agree with Supervisor Ung. I was asking Pat this last week, who sits on the Woodbury Township and what are their terms? I don't expect Pat to go and email all of you because you'd probably laugh at me thinking I should've known that already. I mean, there are certain things that, you know, probably don't rise to that level. So I, I, I wonder if, if we just have a, a motion to, to give direction as a board to the, um, to the chair or any other supervisor that when a department head is asked for a report or a substantial piece of information rising above the simple question like I just referenced, that the department heads go ahead and email that information to all supervisors and start with, with that as far, and, and see if that doesn't help us move in the, in the right direction.
A good example is, uh, I asked Dennis last Friday to put together some information on TIF. He finished it up yesterday. I got it about three fifteen, three thirty, somewhere near, and we're gonna get it today. So, you know, do we email that out? I think there's not enough time to get that around in that situation. It's pretty potent information that he put together, which I didn't even have a... It's pretty potent information that he put together, which I didn't even have a clue about what all this means. So I don't, I don't think anyone is intentionally not passing on their information. With the exception of the economic development, some of that's a little touchy, a little dicey. However, if you want to speak with David Gleiser, you're more than welcome. And I'm sure he'll give you an earful, as would any other department head. Some of that stuff can't go far because of its nature. But, you know, I don't know that, I don't think any department head's going to not tell you what's going on. They'd better tell you. I have never told a department head you can't speak. That would be crazy.
And I do think this board has been good when a department head or Pat has emailed all of us not to reply all and engage in any sort of conversations outside of that. So I, I, I think the board's to be commended for that, so.
I would also agree that most of the situations that we're talking about do turn into board items. And we are given sufficient time over the weekend to review those. But there are times where you do some background research and that should be shared with the whole board.
And sooner rather than later, probably. And I, quite honestly, I don't want an email on every conversation you have. That is really not the intent. So I think this is very good conversation. I just guess I want to get it out the table and, and just see what anyone's thoughts were and let you know where I'm at when I'm questioning things. It's because, quite honestly, I don't have background on it. And I do want to feel, I want every department head to feel free to, to give out information. And they've heard that today. I think from everyone here that, that they can do that without repercussion, and they should be doing that. So, so that really, that's important, I think, as well.
Joshua, we had a conversation, some department heads and myself, and we were talking about the practice of emailing board members. And I told them that's what I did. We had some disagreement because some of the department heads had heard that the interpretation of the law for Chapter 22 is that, or even 21, is that if you email information to the board, is there a problem with that, the entire board?
It is something you have to-
Not expecting a reply. I mean, I put in there not, you know, don't reply.
It is something you have to be careful about. You still have the same threshold for whether it's a meeting as if you were meeting in person. Is there deliberation or action going on? There are, if something's purely informational and you're putting it out there, you're not expecting a response or, you know, it's just to get the information out there, then that would probably be okay. The concern is, is if someone, you know, someone may not have even closely looked at who's all on email and responds to everyone, and then you have a potential for a violation that wasn't intentional. But you have that possibility when everybody's on the email. So typically, what I say is try to avoid it if possible. But there are times, even when I've sent out, when we do an opinion, I've sometimes emailed that and sent that out so that I know that on this date and time, everybody got that information. And that's helpful to do that at times.
With the exception of your emails, any information that goes to all five supervisors is subject to FOIA.
Subject to what?
Right?
Freedom of Information Act.
Well, open records.
If all five of us get it, and Ashley, one to one.
Yeah, well, any documents and any, any county documents, the standard rule is they're open records unless an exception applies. So exceptions could apply to documents between supervisors. Or, as you mentioned, if it's something from the attorney's office, it could be covered by an exception. But yeah, there'd be, have to be an independent exception that applies in order for it to be confidential.
My understanding was, the way I've been taught, is that anything that I put on paper is subject to that unless you go and simply, John Rush used to tell me this, go down Chapter 22. Doesn't it fit in any of these exceptions? If it isn't in specifically spelled out there, it's subject to, if anybody wants it, they can get it. And so anytime you craft something, you better figure out it being on the front page of the Sioux City Journal at some point is practice that I was taught.
I think that there are up to like 67 exceptions now. But generally, the exceptions are pretty limited. So the, I mean, the default is that if it's, if it's a county document, then it's an open record.
And I, and even when I put this together, I understood that was going to be probably a discussion point today. But I, I guess I have a question. I was at an ISAC meeting one time, and I think it was the ISAC attorney said that if something was in draft form, as long as it wasn't a final product, that it was not subject to the open meetings. Do you agree with that? Or what am I looking at to?
Well, that's a relatively new exception. Two or three years ago, it was passed. There's not a lot of case law on that, but there has been a revision to that exception. They added another sentence that, the second sentence seems to swallow the first sentence. In the sense that it talks about, you know, it can't be in its final form. It has this, you know, still being worked on. But then the second sentence says that if it's in the hands of the individual that's going to use it to adopt the policy decision, then it's an open record. So I'm not sure, and, and like I said, there's not a case on it yet. So I'm, I'd be hesitant to rely on that.
But just- It's a technical term. We can put it on anything.
But just as the slowest supervisor in the room, if I just understand this correctly, if Dennis emails out to all the supervisors a fiscal report from this past year, and we don't respond all, and it's informational, that would be acceptable or okay, correct? Or if the auditor-
That's open meetings.
Not the-
Open record. Is that what you said?
It's an open, it's an open record, but it's not a violation of an open meeting's open record. So I, I'm saying it's, right, I'm saying, and I have no problem with that as far as the public being, having access to that. So I don't see the, the danger for us as a board unless we start replying to one another or taking action via email. Is that a correct understanding?
Right, just the disseminating the report is okay.
And that's really what's at, at discussion right now, correct, Supervisor Smith?
Mm-hmm. Part of it.
I would-
Yeah, that's part of our discussion.
I think all of us, everybody, department heads included, have to believe that whenever they put out an email, it is subject to open records, period. You can't assume you can send an email to somebody else in county government that isn't accessible by somebody. All I have to do is file FOIA, and if they know what they're looking for, they got it.
The other, the other thing-
Anytime you write an email, you have to make damn sure you're writing what you want to say and keep the opinion out of it.
The other thing connected with that too, and kind of more to Supervisor Smith's point, is there's a pretty strong argument that a supervisor, by virtue of their position, even if a, if a record is a confidential record to the public, a supervisor, by virtue of their position, would in most cases have the right to access that document, even if it's, you know, not a document that they created.
What was that, Joshua?
Even if it's not a document that they created. An example would be, I, I don't know if it's a case or an AG's opinion, but there was a supervisor that wasn't able to be at a closed session in some county, and then later wanted to review those minutes. And they weren't allowed access initially, but then the, the result of the case was yes, they have the right to access the closed minute, or the minutes of that closed session by virtue of their position.
So then it became public?
No, so that supervisor was able to, to listen to the tape and, and access the minutes. But yeah, that doesn't make it a public record.
Basically, a supervisor has to have access, I think, to, to any information they need necessary to do the job they were elected to do. So that's the intent of this. I don't know where we're at.
But just before you put this on the agenda, when I sent the email about going to propose change to the bylaws, I was going to address that, but in different fashion is that the, if a board member has a duty, that you got a report from a department head or an elected official, that you would share it, would be your responsibility to share it with the board if it was something that you felt that you were going to bring forward as an agenda item only as information purposes. That the responsibility was going to be on the board instead of putting it on the department head as a bar, a board member to share it with the rest of the board. We're going to get into deliberation, but that's what-
Would you, both as auditor and assisting county attorney, feel comfortable if department heads are emailing the board to be CC'd on them, just as far as an accountability measure for us, to give us guidance? Would that bother either one of you? I don't think you'll be inundated with emails, but.
What's the question?
The question is, if department heads are emailing the board as a whole, would you feel comfortable if you were carbon copied in on those emails?
I'd be comfortable. I don't want to.
That's what I said. He's talking on a one-off.
I'd prefer not to be. I mean, if there's a specific question beforehand, we can answer that. But, I mean, I'm not going to have time to review everything that comes in, and so.
What I was planning on doing is working with Joshua to see if we could craft something like that to the bylaws as far as duties for the board members and to share that information. Put the responsibility on the board members rather than the, the department heads.
There's, it's a two-way street. If you're dealing with department heads and trying to influence them to think your way, that's not fair either. That's putting a very large burden on them trying to do their job. And that's, I think, some of the pressure that's probably going on. The department head meetings have been pretty straightforward. There's no, I mean, it's business. And they've been pretty intense, some of the stuff that get talked about. But it ends up here, the valuation system, the CIP, we have long discussions on that, the new thoughts on budgeting. It's a huge change in their lives. I mean, some of that's going to change the way they do business.
Well, and I wonder if it's going to change the way we as supervisors do business. I'm not real clear on that. And actually, I, that would be a case in point where I did appreciate Dennis meeting with me and giving me the information. I think maybe you had, or somebody initiated or directed him to do that, or maybe came up with it on his own, I don't know. But, you know, that's a part where-
It's too much to have it in a board meeting.
I, I mean, I, I, I needed that extra, probably needed kind of a review lesson.
And the thought process on it is pretty intense too, because it changes the way we're doing business. We're going to look at budgeting before we look at budgeting. We're going to have the information before we really do the hardcore stuff. It's like, you know, you're saying, I don't have information. Well, when you walk into the January meeting and you get the budget book, you don't have any information. You don't have a clue. And the CIP thing, that's, we've got to work harder at getting that over a period of time and it directed toward the things that need to get done. Approving lawnmowers at the spur of the moment is killing me, you know?
I think this discussion kind of shows us why boards have liaison assignments. I mean, department heads then know who their first point of contact is as they, as we flush things out and bring it to the whole board, I think. And the reports on committee meetings are something we as a board brought in at the beginning of the year, and I think those have been excellent. They could be longer. We could have that discussion. But I think it's been a great step in the right direction.
All right, what do we want to do?
Yeah, I was going to ask that.
I would make a motion-
I have a real hard time changing the bylaws. I think that's inappropriate. A policy? I'm not so sure about that either. I don't know.
I'll make a motion if, and it can go down in flames if nobody likes it. How's that? So I'd move that the chairman be directed by the board to email all department heads that an information request rising to the level of a report be disseminated to all supervisors.
Can I change the wording a little bit? At the next department head meeting, we'll talk about it as, I don't want to send any emails. I don't know. I suppose, I don't care.
How is the chair going to be aware of a report that, for instance, I, I run? Do I send it to the chair and the chair disseminates? What is the, what's the thought there?
It would be the department head. The, the chair would be emailing the department heads a memo to say, if you have a request from a supervisor that rises to the level of a report, please, in responding, email that to all supervisors so that we all have that. And I'm talking beyond the, the basic questions of, you know, that don't rise to the level of a, a budget fiscal analysis or, you know, what's happened on secondary roads the last three years on this particular item.
Will you say it again? I'm sorry.
So I, I'd move that the chairman be directed by the board to email department heads that an information request rising to the level of a report be disseminated to all supervisors.
Fine.
I'm going to second it. It may not be perfect, but I think it's in the right direction. I appreciate, so I second it.
More discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Hey, Mr. Chair. This is a, an action on revision to, let me word it the correct way. Approval of internal procedures for requesting services under McClure engineering contract and for administering the contract. This is a follow-up to last week's informational item. And so I would move that the previously approved open contract with McClure engineering be exercised at the discretion of the chair up to $10,000 in a 90-day period, except by approval of a board majority. And I believe the other information is included in the action required.
I'll second that with Dennis's addendum. We got a bill in this week?
Right. We got a bill in, we got, we got a bill in this week for services in May. I think in the motion, you should put, when is this cap effective? To me, it'd be effective when you pass it today or talked about last week. I guess you set the date, but you haven't set a date. So the bill we got that's coming forward next week should go on to on-call that had no limit. Anything from June, say June 1st on, would go on to 10,000 cap for 90 days. It should go on June, July, and August. At the end of August, or for each a cap, we come back to the board.
How much was the bill?
Bill's $4,400. And it'll be in your, it'll be in your packet next week. And if you want to review the claim, it'll be available in Pat's office. But you need to have a starting date when the 10,000 starts. And I would suggest that the bill you have now really should go back on the on-call because it was done before you even started talking about the cap.
Can you do that?
I'd concur and.
Second. This-
Concur with that?
I'd probably include it in it, but I can live with it. I'll live with it.
This goes back to the previous item. A meeting with McClure, whether it's economic development or the new interchange or whatever, if that meeting is attended by one or two supervisors, how are the other supervisors informed of that?
I don't remember what the meetings were.
Well, I have no knowledge of the meeting.
I have a feeling it's savings.
But to Larry's point, going forward.
Yep.
Going forward. Is it possible to inform every supervisor prior to calling him? I mean, nothing should be that, happen that quickly that all of a sudden you got to make a call. Something I would think should be in the works. And there should be ample, ample opportunity that we might all know about a direction we're going as a county.
Are you talking specifically about this motion?
I am. I'm trying to decide if I'm going to vote yea or nay on it. So I'm just trying to get some- to get some clarification on it, I guess.
My response to that would be that I understand the question at hand. I don't know if it's directly applicable to this particular motion, as far as capping the amount that the chair can schedule as far as how that.
Give me somebody.
How that's communicated back. I think that's a separate issue. I'm not saying it's an invalid issue. I'm just saying I don't know if it's the issue at hand.
I think this means that these will be brought before the whole board more often by virtue of there being a cap. Will have to be updated every $10,000, and as we've seen, that can, those dollars can go pretty quickly when you're dealing with economic development countywide and McClure Engineering, and so I think this was crafted in response to the previous concerns.
And I appreciate that, and I do think so, but I still think the underlying problem is, even after the fact, it just doesn't settle real well with me personally.
What do you mean?
I guess I would just, you know, as a board, we haven't targeted any projects. So I guess I just don't know why we're calling them in. Once again, I.
Yeah, I have difficulty with this, an open-ended contract.
I don't want to keep hammering this. This is what I'm trying to get away from, hammering this every time, and not, I'm tired of listening to myself kind of on it, but is there any way to do that? I'm just asking you.
We have a motion on the floor to cap the McClure Engineering at 10 grand, and that would start effective today. Is that your motion?
Right.
And we have a second.
But we don't have an answer to who's going to be privy to any conversations or meetings with McClure Engineering.
What you're asking is that you want to be privy to everything all the time, every day, all day. How did you do that when you were chair?
Mark, I don't want, I don't want to hear your BS anymore.
I don't want to hear yours either.
That's kind of what I'm trying to get away from, is this kind of discourse. So I guess I'm wondering.
So have I, so have I, but we're getting into the point where you want to tie up everything, and we all stop.
No, I just want to be informed.
You'll get informed.
But we haven't been. That's the problem, Mark.
Hang on. No one has mentioned, this is not an old board versus new board thing, and none of us were going to bring it up, but Supervisor Clausen did ask Dennis Butler for a report on financials to oppose the budget at the final budget hearing, that he instructed Dennis Butler not to give out to the other supervisors. That's my understanding. This sort of stuff has happened in the past. This applies to all of us, not just the new board.
That's a wild accusation, and I'd like to know exactly what you're saying.
That's exactly what I just said.
That I instructed Mr. Butler not to give what?
Give the report that you received yourself. You received a paper copy of a report that you use as a template to oppose the budget. So this is not an issue of the old board versus the new board. This, as I said, applies to all of us, and I think that's the understanding we need to have with this.
All right. Moving forward, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Reports on committees.
Safety and security. Met on June 12th, Amy Bernstein, Lisa McNeil, Judge Hoffmeyer, Ed Gilloway, Chairman Munson, Sheriff Drew, John Malloy, Gary Niles, Major Toddwick, and Mark Olson. I know I'm leaving one person out from the Assistant County Attorney's Office, or the County Attorney's Office, so just wanted to update the board in trying to keep the information flow going. We discussed having a review of any security incident, and if there's an incident, how we can learn from those lessons, and also make sure that the information flow is made countywide so that we can learn from those lessons. We had a discussion of active-duty shooter training, and there seems to be money in the current security budget for a quick-response time system, for technologies to upgrade the current system, which is, I think, a good thing. Good conversation about uniform presence at the door, and just the robust presence that we have. We're going to meet every other month, August 14th, October 9th, and sometime in December, and so I think, all told, things are going well with security of our personnel, and commend the board as a whole for that.
We've had a couple of meetings, one last week and one today, on the traffic control, coming out and going into CF, and the sheriff will be bringing a proposal back next week for our board meeting. Anyone else?
We had a wellness committee today that was pretty fun, and it seems as though our balances are good. Should defer to Eddie, took the notes. The group had some ideas about things we could do to, you know, increase the number of wellness opportunities, anywhere from like luncheon learns to informal get-togethers at the farmer's market on Saturday mornings, bike rides, kayak rides. Nothing's set in stone yet, but it was a good discussion, and I expect more will come up from that, once they put some of the ideas together and email all of us, so.
I did have a committee meeting this morning with Jim Fisher, just two of us. Next Wednesday, next, actually, next Tuesday, we have so much going on, I think we just have a regular board meeting. We have a community action agency closed session hearing, and we have the CF discussion, and there's some other, going to be a lot of other things. I'd hate to go out to Mowville and spend an hour to an hour and a half before we got to the meeting. So I think we'll just go out on Wednesday, starts at 4:30. What I've heard out of Mowville is very impressive. It's exciting what's going on out there, and I think that's good. I've asked Dennis Butler to put together some information, which he's going to run by us now, because it's very interesting, and Mr. Glazer, talk about what we possibly could do down the road in terms of the TIF possibilities. Dennis, you're up.
Just before I pass this out, you'll notice in your board packet for your information only, or for your information, there's two budgets, or two taxing district amendments in the packet. Amendment number one for a district, amendment number two. All those are, is changing how they're spending money. With the new laws, anytime we go out and do a project that we didn't have, such as an amendment number two, where we had the roads in there, that was fine, but if you have just generalities, we have to have amendment like the city's doing. You'll know states come through quite often. We check them out to make sure there aren't boundary changes. Otherwise, we aren't going, or I'm not going to the meetings because there's no necessary to do it. They create the district. It's their ability to spend the money where they want, but they got to inform the public. And Mark said, I just got done with this yesterday afternoon. I mailed it to him to kind of look over it a little bit. Otherwise, this is type of information will go out in, you know, future if I get done in time to get it to you. And this is information only, and all these decision-making here. What I put together here is a financial plan for the future, as it stands now, and with one project in the works called Dogwood Trail. This is kind of a, or smaller version than we got in the 2050 plan. I did not go into all the other projects that are listed in the 2050 plan because we know what those could be. There are dollar estimates on it, but at the time, I'm just showing you where we're currently at and what the future is, what we know. We went into the revenues, the green is revenues, red is expenditures, and then we'll go to the bottom part here. But on the revenue side of it, I broke it down to four different sizes. One is the CF Industries, that is a locked-in number. We know what that's going to be. The only way the number will change is that the levy rate goes up or down. That we can't predict. We use the same levy rate we currently have. When you get to the railroad, that will go on basis next year, 16, 17 budget. I left that constant going across because that value can go up or down. We're taking what the value currently is, less the rollback, which is 10% rollback refunded by the state, which we hope the state will continue to fund 100%. That's always debatable. Next one is other TIF revenues. You notice I kept that constant. We're currently getting $33,766 from the current other TIF revenues. That is, other businesses within the TIF district have land values. As values go up or down, rollbacks go up or down, which affect our other TIF revenues. I left that the same. That's a soft number, because hopefully, the whole intent or renewal is to get economic development. That number should rise over the years. There are several, you know, talks of things doing out there. That should rise. The reimbursement with Sergeant Bluff, that is an unknown number at the moment. We know we're getting 50% back of all the TIF revenues when we create that TIF district. It depends how fast they develop the TIF district, but for now, we got to assume that we're going to cover it until that gets developed. They are talking also, possibly combining the other two districts into this district so they can pay the county back quicker. So that's numbers there that will come to light down the road here. We just don't know how much, so I left it off for now. So we do have two soft numbers there. The other TIF revenues, it should grow. The reimbursement from Sergeant Bluff will go from zero to reimburse 50% at least, until the loan is paid off. We go to the bottom part. On the bottom part, I've broken it down to four categories. For certain, we know what the CF Industries interest road is. That's $800,000. We're going to fund that out general basic, by transfer. Our general basic fund revenues are low. Our cash balance is low, so we, it'd be the same difference. We're going to be paying a little bit of interest on this, so I did put it as a loan out for TIF, a TIF loan. I use 1.6% because when we go five to 10 years, your interest rate is going up slightly, because you're going over a longer period of time with indefinite interest rate structure. The banks will protect themselves somewhat. The CF Industries on-road site, we did do that as a tax rebate, $200,000 a year, starting in 2018, 19, for the next three years, so four years, $200,000. That was in our development agreement we agreed to about a year ago. The AGP Road project, that is a project, it's firm number, pretty firm there, $750,000. Talking with our county engineer, that's part of the new RISE grant that was approved last week, and I used the 1.6% over 10-year period. The Dogwood Trail, that's the Sergeant Bluff, that's still, we have to wait till San Anton before we can do any TIF procedures. They are in the process of that. We're hoping by the end of July or mid-July, that'll be done, and we'll proceed with the tiffing of that part there and work out agreement with them on that, where they will repay us over 10 years. After that's all said and done, you can go to the next line, which is revenues over expenditures. The first year, you can see we're going to be short $18,000, but with additional revenues coming onboard, we should be all right there. Then you can go across and see each fiscal year, how the revenues are going to be greater than our expenditures, as they are proposed now. Right now, we only have four projects. So you can see in fiscal year 2010, we have a little extra, $120,000 extra there. In fiscal year 2020, we got $819,000, and you can see how it keeps growing year by year. Okay, I'm talking with Mark here, proposed property tax relief, 50%. Now, these are proposals. This is just information. If we start in 2020 to 50% back, what I did, I took the revenues coming in, divided by two, 50%, took that off, the total excess revenue after we pay our bills. You can see in 2020, if we get 50% back, we do have $167,000 left for economic development. You get to year 2021, things really start kicking in. It'd be $926,000 property tax relief. That'd be half the revenue anticipated coming in. Again, this number will grow, because we do anticipate, you know, economic development down those areas. And then we'll also have Sergeant Bluff reimbursements come in, which will offset our using of our TIF revenues. So as it goes along, you can see available for property tax relief. It grows and grows and grows. I did go out 10 years, because that's, as our projects are now, after 10 years, they're done. You can see in year 2029, it seems like a long time, but it does go fast, that then we have no obligations as it currently stands. And then you see how the revenues keep growing for both property tax relief and also for revenues available for economic development. We're fully giving money back. We're fulfilling economic development. This is just a informational, this could shift many times before we're done, because you'll probably have newer projects who have more revenue coming in from additional growth in economic development.
Dennis, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Sorry, nothing like a complicated chart at the end of a meeting, but thank you for pointing the other.
Thank you.
Okay, so just my one simple question.
Yes.
Taking 50% of the total TIF revenue and dropping it down, let's just look at FY 20, 2020. When we, you're taking 50% of total TIF revenues and proposing that for property tax relief. Is that correct?
Correct.
But isn't that, when, when we say 50% of TIF revenues, we have a larger portion that's available if we're tiffing, because that's money that can go to all of those different entities, but we have to look at our property tax relief through a second lens, right?
Correct.
When you're, we're actually getting, let's say, 43.43% of that, and then looking at 50%, or am I, am I?
No, you're looking at right. The 651,000 2020 would have to be a portioned out to all the taxing bodies. Right now, with the tax rate structure, we are 43%.
So actually, we need to, we would need to then say, we're going to take of that proposed property tax relief in that blue line, we're going to take that times a multiplier of 43.43% or whatever that is.
Yep, and that'll vary every year, but if we took the constant, where we're at right now, I could go across there and say, how much is county, how much is school, how much is each taxing body?
I just want to make sure that we all understand that, because sometimes we say, well, we'll have 651,000 that we can give towards property tax relief, but that's not really what we can do. We have to say, no, that's actually 324,528.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But what you could say is you could take, if you had like a Toyota plant come in or something, you could do 651,000 in year 2020. You could capture that if you needed to for a very large project.
Oh, yes. This is just.
In addition to the 167 in this model.
Correct.
Right, if we just tiffed out, yeah, but I just want to make sure that, that property tax relief becomes much less. It's not an even split, 50/50.
Yes, when you say, you're exactly right there. Now, if there's more viable projects come aboard that the board wants to go on, yes, that'll eat into maybe that property tax relief, but it also may create more revenue, more tax base that may offset, and we may even have more property tax relief or more money available for economic development. There could be something huge come in here, which I wish we'd get. You know, we've done pretty good so far.
The reason I asked Dennis to do this is because I heard him talking, and Lutz, and whoever else, that our revenue doesn't start until some point. Well, this is very clear that we can't do anything else until after 2019, period. We have no income.
Unless you borrow it, and he's got a whole little bottle on how you can do that, too.
But you got three years with nothing coming in.
I understand that.
You got $3 million we've already borrowed.
That's.
Which were good projects. They had to be done, but we're behind the eight ball to say, oh, yeah, we've got money. We're, you need to explain this to David.
Yes. And we're capitalizing. You notice there's $12,000 for three years. We can capitalize loans out for three years. There's one thing that, for informational, that we've come up with through Bob, and I've talked to the bank, whoever gets it, you know, be up to, but we can get a line of credit. We've never done this before, but when we say a line of credit, the bank comes out and says, you have a line of credit for $2 million. As you do your projects, you know exactly what you're spending. When you get to the end of that project, you borrow exactly what you anticipated, instead of trying to estimate these out. That's another option that we haven't ever, we've never done, a line of credit. But most of our stuff, we know.
This is the worst-case scenario.
Yes, this is the worst case, absolutely, because we're hoping for more TIF revenues from other projects. There's obviously going to be more, as this, whenever that interchange's built, I think you're going to see a lot of changes.
The good news about having three years before we can get really excited is that Mr. Glazer has a large list of things he can get done. He has three years to work with Mowville. He has three years to work with all the other towns. They need strategic plans. They need CIPs. They need the whole list, because we shouldn't be, Mowville has all that stuff, but we shouldn't be looking at a community that doesn't have a plan. I found out here a while back that. I found out here a while back that the county funded 10 strategic plans through Simco in 1970. I think we need to revisit that thought, and that's something David could work on. He's got time to deal with, and three years is not very long.
No, in three years, you will have Highway 20 done, and you're going to see a lot of economic development in this county.
I think we, I still think we need to have some kind of an economic development summit or something, get us together, map out a plan, if we can, as a board, I realize we're committing future boards to something, but not really, just kind of, it would be strategic planning, because you can't do everything. And we should prioritize, I feel.
Well, this certainly lays out the framework for me.
Yep, and I can update this, say on a yearly basis, we'll have different valuations coming through. When we get to 15, I can do, after we get to 15, new task base, I can do one at the end of the year, and update so we get closer and closer to where we're truly at.
Thanks, sir.
Any questions?
No, I read this yesterday afternoon.
I'd like to ask you, we'll call you tomorrow.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I saw the look in Pat's eyes, like he wanted me to continue with comments, so I wanted to make one more. I just wanted to commend, commend the board today for doing what I think is a, a very good thing that the board's probably done for a number of years, but that's honor employees, and I thought it was a very nice thing, so, wanted to thank you all, and commend you all, and thank all the employees, so. That was a nice thing, and the hot dog cookout, or whatever you call it, so.
Diddy's going to put in a workman's comp claim though, because he burned his hands on the grill.
I enjoyed it though, I thought, I thought this point was really enjoyable.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you all.
I did forget one item, Mr. Glazer has a very important item.
Having another child.
David Glazer, rural economic development, just wanted to talk about an issue and a concern that I have, and it could possibly be shared with other county staff, or constituents as well. Our county emails are, have the @suecity.org domain, and while at face value, that might not seem like an issue, to me, it's, it sort of is, and we've had, I've had experienced issues where having that domain has confused constituents or people that have come in to do business, and also, I kind of feel like it's a misrepresent, misrepresentation of myself, or, you know, it, it's misleading because I'm not an employee of Sue City, and so I feel like our, our email domain should be reflective of the organizations that we are employed by. I've had people that I've spoken to over the phone, or have communicated through email, and then they arrive, you know, we set up a point, a time to meet, and they will oftentimes show up over at City Hall, and because they assumed that, you know, even though I'll say county courthouse, sixth floor, it's kind of ingrained in their memory that it's, it's a Sue City domain, so they assume that the, the office is in City Hall. So it's bringing forth, it's just informational to the board this evening, with the potential that maybe some discussions could be had with WCICC about, you know, setting up county-specific domain, and then beginning the, the transference of email addresses to that domain. And I know when Otter DeGill and I met with WCICC a few weeks ago, I brought that issue up, and Mr. Malloy did say that, you know, that's something that, that he, that he's aware of, but I, I don't know if it's just an issue.
Is it possible with, remember when we went to a couple of those email meetings? When actually, he wanted to change the format, and there was some pushback.
You're not the first one to bring that up, and John Malloy actually, I think, probably two or three times over the years have asked if the county is interested in doing that, and there wasn't really any strong sentiment to do that because of the issues with switching it over, and, but it is, it's definitely doable.
It is, I mean, and I've been in organizations where they've, you know, there's transferred over, the, the, the old domain will be active for a certain period of time, which gives you time to update all of your contacts, make them aware of the change, and then any emails sent to the old domain will be forwarded to the new one with an auto reply saying, this email address has been changed, so. It's something that I feel, and, and I don't understand why it hasn't been done, probably just for simplicity of, I don't know, but it's aggravating to me, so.
It was also tied into the whole group lives thing, that I think that they would like to migrate my group lives.
They would, but they didn't get much, I don't, I want to be politically correct here, they didn't get a lot of sentiment.
It's become more, it's clunkier and clunkier. It doesn't, and what the, your phones, it's even providing, there's more problems with it even now, keep that. So, that's what he was looking at, there's a cost involved, plus some effort to do that, but it is something. Because that was the first question I had when I came here 18 years ago, was why I didn't use that, it was because of the joint effort, so.
Yeah, first day I got my email, I said, oh, that's wrong, I don't work for Sue City, and so.
It's doable, takes an effort, and a cost.
Pat, you and David want to take this on?
Maybe, yeah.
Bring us back some info.
I guess we could send it out to, start by questioning the department.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I guess I, just me speaking personally, I, I guess I wouldn't rather, I would rather not survey people to see, I would, I think it's just an organizational thing that needs to happen, so. But if, I mean, you know.
I would agree.
Every time we take that approach, we get yelled at.
It's, I, you know.
I'd be happy to call John tomorrow, because I know he has been frustrated himself with this whole email system, and it really, there was a cost, pushback, and I don't understand if it's doable or not doable, but I would be willing to.
It's like state employees having Des Moines email domains.
I'll call him and see what I can do, I'll do that.
I didn't want to be remiss and, and let you think that this was just David's problem. There isn't a day that doesn't go by that the same instance of, hey, we got somebody showing up for a zoning permit over in City Hall, or vice versa, and we get their people, they get ours. I've never made the connection, though, between maybe that's impacted by us representing ourselves in some maybe small way as Sue City, but now it's got me thinking. So I'm all for a, at least a review of the scenario, let's at least talk about it.
I agree. Does it really?
Yeah, we have people that come looking at the city to us, and vice versa, and I think a lot of it starts from the Sue Dash city level. So it's, it's just a branding.
Yeah.
Do they find out Sue City's have, have the same problems?
I mean, it is, I, so I've been, you know, working on the new website for my department, and this does have a lot to do with branding and, and your organizational identity and so forth, and it's even, I've even considered about, because I purchased the, the domain W C R E D, so I can do things with more bells and whistles in terms of the website than WCICC can, which is why I'm working with this organization on redesigning the website for my department about just using the wcrd.com for my email address, just to alleviate that situation for myself, but then I think it's probably an issue for other, other staff, so.
I would agree, I think Sue City would be having the same discussions if their email said at Woodbury County.
Absolutely.
I mean.
Oh, yes. All right, anything else for the good?
I do have something. I want to give the board, department heads, and media some advance notice that I will be absent for three upcoming board meetings, not the next meeting, next week I will be here. But the reason is that my wife, who is a Honduran citizen and only child, has not been able to see her family back in Honduras for four years, that I've been politicking around here in Woodbury County, so we've decided to make it a point to go back, and because we meet every week, there's really no perfect time to do that. So I chose after the budget season, so for June 30th, July 7th, and July 14th, I've advised the chair that I will be in Honduras. I would be interested in participating by phone for the June 30th meeting, if there's a consensus of the board, and if the phone systems can be set up in a couple of weeks' time, which I don't see a reason why that couldn't be done. It's probably more feasible for me to call from Honduras rather than for Woodbury County to call there. But I wanted to, again, give as much advance notice as possible. I don't really, you know, think that I should wait another four years to.
You won't need to go to Honduras if you wait another four years.
That's exactly right, so. So, again, that's, I'll remind everybody next week, since there are a lot of meetings I'll be missing, but.
I think it would be very interesting, try to do the, the phone thing on the 30th, give it a try.
Skype works too, either way. No, that's just the week of the three that I would not either be on an island or away from phones. Honduras is not known for.
Cell towers.
Advanced cellular communications.
So you got about one spot you got to be in.
I, I got about, one of these three meetings I can probably make by phone, and that is the most feasible, so I, I would not want to miss, miss it if I, if I had an option to attend electronically.
Very good. Anything else? Moved to adjourn?
So moved.